Good evening. Last Sunday, two parents in our community lost a son. Siblings lost a brother and grandparents lost a grandson. And the Oyster River School community lost a friend. And the world lost a wonderful, creative, sensitive, and kind young man. When you watch the stars in the winter sky tonight, please remember Quest Jaeger and his family and friends and the girl that loved him.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of you know, schools are very much like families. And we celebrate our successes together, but we also experience loss together. A situation like this presents us with many questions that we're not able to answer. But I wanted to make sure the community knew that we had counselors available today in the school. In addition, we brought in six professionals from outside the school system from community counseling who are also here to help our students through a very rough day. Our emergency crisis plan members at the high school started meeting on Monday and Tuesday to prepare for student arrival this morning. Our principal, Todd Allen, was an amazing leader this morning when he met with staff at 7:00. And as he and I walked through the building for the next three hours, we saw teachers teaching. We saw students with opportunities to go and grieve and talk to counselors. We set up stations throughout the building. Cannot say how impressed I am with our teaching staff today. They did exactly what they needed to do to support our students. We're very fortunate to work in Oyster River and have a staff that was there for our students 110% today. In addition, we have sent out several alert nouns through email to our parental community. And we've put information on our webpage so that parents who want to reference quality material can do so to support their own children. The loss today at the school was palpable. And I really want to commend our students and staff for how they handled it. We'll have professionals in the building through Friday. We also want to let parents know that if they need to contact professionals, we do have them in the building and we can arrange that for them. So obviously, we share in the family's loss and we wish them the very, very best.
Thank you.
And will you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
With that, we go into public comments. Hearing none. Superintendent's actions.
Madam Chair, I'd ask the board to consider a motion to approve the second read, the adoption of the attached list of Oyster River Cooperative School District policies.
This is the list of policies that have not been changed from the first read.
Madam Chair, do you want them approved individually or as a slate?
I think we can do it as a list since nothing has changed.
With that said, I will make a motion to approve Policy HP, Employee-Job Actions, Policy HPA, Employee-Job Actions, Unauthorized Staff Absences, Policy JEAB, School Assignment, Policy JLCK, Special Physical Health Needs of Students, Policy EBBD, Indoor Air Quality, Policy EBCD, Emergency Closings, Policy EC, Buildings and Ground Management, and Policy ECAC, Vandalism, for second read and final adoption.
Thank you. Moved by Krista, second by Ann. Could we have a vote, please? Seventeen affirmative, John, and the affirmative. Motion passes.
No Assistant Superintendent's report tonight. Undermine, I would like to share with you following dates. Just a reminder that January 9th is our budget hearing night. It's at the high school in the auditorium at 7:00. Then new to this budget cycle are meetings that are hosted by town officials. They're not official meetings of the council, of select people, but they're hosting them. And the first one will be in the Germ Town Hall in Council Chambers at 6:00, January 17th. Then the town of Lee follows on January 23rd in the Lee Public Safety Complex at 6:00. And then finally, the town of Madbury will host a budget meeting on January 28th at the Madbury Town Hall at 7:00. I think that probably the rest of this can go into the next meeting.
Okay.
Then we want to talk some more about the draft warrant articles. And I invite our business manager forward.
First, I just wanted to remind everyone in the community that posted on the website, you'll find all the information about the budget along with those dates that the superintendent just mentioned right on the front page rotator. If you didn't catch those dates, they're out there. The warrant. At the last meeting, I presented to you the option of dissolving the Facilities Development Capital Reserve Fund. So in your packet, you have two warrants. You have the warrant that we talked about at the last meeting. The difference in that warrant is that I've inserted the amounts for the contract that you passed at the last board meeting. So you'll see those amounts. And then the second warrant has everything with the addition of that article to dissolve that capital fund, Capital Reserve Fund. In your packet, you'll see the information from Department of Revenue Association that talks about Capital Reserve Funds and the fact that once they become not useful, that you should perhaps dissolve them. So that would be my recommendation to perhaps put that out there on a warrant to dissolve that fund. Questions?
To do what?
Well, the monies from that would go into your general fund and become part of your fund balance. So...
Another option would be to dissolve it and use it as part of our capital improvement.
Right. Use it for another project if you wanted to do one before the end of the year.
Could you just share in a little nutshell initially why it was formed?
Well, originally, I think in your packet, I included the warrant and the verbiage. I don't happen to have it right in front of me. Talks about facility needs of the district. And I guess, let's see, the actual wording back in...
1999.
1999, Article 7. It was worded, "Shall the district vote to establish a Capital Reserve Fund under provisions of RSA 35:1 to be known as the Facilities Development Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of future development of facilities to meet the needs of the Oyster River Cooperative School District?" And then they raised money to put into that fund. So the purpose of that was for future development of facilities to meet the needs of the Oyster River Cooperative School District.
Would you suggest that perhaps the way budgets were formed then and the way budgets are formed now, that we are trying to proactively understand and anticipate what our needs will be so that the needs of that fund become obsolete?
I guess you could put it that way. I mean, if you read into what they had, the purpose of that was for, was for future facility needs. So I mean, you always have facility needs, so if you left it there, you could use it for that. Given the fact that right now, putting things into funds like that, generally in the past, you could make some money on them because interest rates were much higher. Obviously, there's nothing to be had with that out there. Even in a CD, it hasn't really produced a whole lot of interest money. The one thing that I think would encourage me to do this is the fact that we have a warrant out there to retain fund balance. So some of the purpose of this can be supported by your fund balance retention article. So it kind of meets that need because our fund balance could be for emergencies. And this is specific, specific for building needs. The other thing we know is our future for student enrollment isn't to increase, so we wouldn't be adding on to facilities. We may do renovations, we may do some improvements. Later this evening, you'll be hearing from Siemens about an upgrade to your buildings. This would be a good use for it. But this specific need here is different than I think their proposal is. It's an upgrade. So this would kind of take that away from the purpose of this particular article, which was pretty specific. So does that answer your question? Does that kind of give you an idea of...
So if this was made a warrant article and approved, would that money have to be expended this year? Could that be carried forward and used for, say, buying a new boiler at Mastway?
Well, good question. That's the danger because if in fact the article that we have here to retain fund balance shouldn't pass, if it didn't pass, then it would go away and it would become part of fund balance that would be turned back to the taxpayers. So if it goes into fund balance retention and that article, other article we have on the warrant, which is new, then it would be part of that money that we get to carry forward, which we have never been able to do in the past. Any of our fund balance always goes back to the taxpayers.
If that article passes and then this is dissolved, the money that could be shifted and carried forward?
Right, exactly, exactly. Or you could make the decision before the end of this year to utilize some of those funds for something in the capital area.
If I remember correctly, to get money out of the fund the way it is is very difficult.
It requires a two-thirds vote, correct?
We could create a fund specifically for facilities maintenance.
You have one.
That is easier to access.
You have one.
A complex.
You do have one.
So it could be put in there.
Right. But you'd have to put another article on there to transfer some of that in there.
So what...
What do you mean, some of it? Can't we transfer all of it?
And you could do that, too.
Considering we have a $4 million maintenance deficit.
So what I would suggest in terms of, we wanted to put this back in front of you tonight, the only opportunity you have to act on it is at our next meeting. So we have a presentation tonight that may impact your decision in two weeks. And we just want to make sure we kept it in your radar. And then when we talk about it in two weeks, you can decide whether you want to ask the voters to dissolve it and use it for another purpose or leave it alone. We wanted to maintain the conversation so that should you choose to want to use it to invest in the buildings, once you hear the presentation tonight, you have some money available to you that you don't have to borrow, that's already sitting there.
How much money is, are we talking about? Is this all?
But I do want to mention that if you choose to go forward this, you do have to disclose this at your public hearing. So it has to be there because you can't bring anything new up after your public hearing. So you couldn't add another article after your public hearing because it has to be disclosed at your public hearing. If you did, you'd have to have another public hearing.
That's why next week is terminal date for you to make a decision about this account.
So in preparing materials for the public hearing, you would want this to be included for discussion purposes? I guess that's the action that I need.
They need to see it in front of them to be able to react one way or the other.
So this is the warrant that we'll go forward with, with that article?
They'll take, they still have, they can be proactive or not act next meeting.
Right.
So prepare the warrant article with the figure.
With the figure in there.
And then they can have the discussion about whether they want to...
And present it at the public hearing to hear what the community has to say about that concept.
Of dissolving.
Of dissolving.
Yes.
But then the second decision is, where does it go? Personally, I would certainly think it was created for facilities. Therefore, it should, and giving a $4 million price tag on facilities, it should not go, in my opinion, into the general fund, but into a dedicated account for that purpose.
That would be my recommendation as well.
Can I ask a question about the public hearing? Is that appropriate?
It's fine because I was going to ask you.
So what is the format going to be so that the board knows what to expect and the public knows what to expect?
Sure. Good question. Last year, I believe, was the first year that the public hearing was held in the auditorium. So the setup was different than, I think, we were in the multipurpose room. So our intent is to set it up the same way with the board on the stage. We will have a PowerPoint and then we will have a podium up front for the community to interact and ask questions.
Okay. And then will the public receive response from the board upon their questions immediately?
Right. You've seen me do several presentations now around the budget. The last one we did just before Christmas break would be the one that I would use to do an overall presentation and then open it up to questions from the community. And I can answer, Sue can answer, board can answer.
A little more informal than like the deliberative, you each take an article and kind of get into a little more detail. This one kind of gives the community more opportunity to ask those questions.
Okay. And will this one be recorded?
Yes.
It's in the auditorium.
It's in the auditorium.
Yes, we will ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student Senate Report.
The Student Senate is working, kind of working on one thing and beginning to work on another thing. We're looking into start times and whether we can make changes to those based on teenagers' sleep patterns while not disturbing athletics too much. We're also looking into the bells and whether they are actually necessary. I know a lot of teachers and students find them annoying, a lot of teachers and students find them necessary. So we're going to see if we can strike a happy balance with that as well.
The bell ringing?
Yeah.
I was always dying for the bell to ring. Thank you, John. Siemens update.
Sue, would you like to do the introduction?
Last year, we had Siemens come in and do an overview of this building, the high school, and came forward with a project that we were able to save considerable amount of energy in this building. We asked them to come back and look at our other buildings and see what kind of savings we might recognize in Moreham, Mastway, and the middle school. And they put together a report and a project, not quite as aggressive as this building, but certainly there's lots of room for savings in those three buildings. And tonight, I believe, Tom, you're going to do a little PowerPoint with some of the key points to that project. Turn it over to Tom.
Did you? Oh, so you already have it?
You want to talk about that?
Yeah, you're ahead of us. It's part of it anyway, so.
If you want, you can put them on the back table and then the people in the audience can have them.
So I still alluded to, my name is Tom Seekins. I'm the accountant under Siemens for the Oyster River School Department. I did the presentation for the first phase, which was part of the publication advertised in front of you for the first phase. I'm just going on the phase two. Pretty awesome press you guys received. Not only was it recognized, but it was used as a case study for TRC, which is a mechanism for divvying out money from the government for projects that are related to energy savings. So not only did you have a fantastic project, which you can clearly see in front of you, those are very rare, but they used you for the postal trial, basically for, you know, how to do efficient projects and how to do them quickly and how to get the fastest payback. So kudos to you guys. It was a great project and we've used it internally for many presentations as well. Problem is, it's very hard to find others that are 1.7-year payback. So sometimes I tend not to use it because it sets up false expectations. But a great, awesome project and we were very happy to be your partner on that. So I know you guys have a lot on your agenda, so I won't spend hours up here going through this. It's important to recognize the team that is part of this project, much like Phase One. We really didn't change anyone except for the addition of Kerry Conway, who was in the audience with us. Kerry is a recent engineering maritime graduate who was going to be assisting Jim Armstrong, who was our senior energy engineer, who was part of Phase One and oversees the calculations of the whole project. So it's not just Sean and I telling you that it's a fantastic project. There's other eyes and ears that are part of these calculations. Then you've got Kyle Bassett, who was part of Phase One, a big part of it. Kyle was the main project manager and our integration specialist, which is huge on this one because we will be integrating with the other schools. So we'll try to get you to all in one system, one energy management platform. And Sean and I are both the conduits with Siemens and Oyster River attending all the meetings. We're making sure everything goes through, talking to Brian, Sue, and Jim. We've already had several meetings, so it's important to keep the same conduit through the whole thing. If I say anything really weird, it's because I was on a cough medicine to put an elephant to sleep.
We understand.
Yeah, my wife said I said some weird stuff, so I didn't want to explain that before and it happens.
Switch, John, the mic's over here.
Oh, okay. Sean's better looking, so I put him up front. And he's bigger. Again, Phase One, success. After we did the Phase One presentation, everyone said, "Why haven't we looked at the other schools?" That was the immediate response to the 1.7-year project payback. And so we did that. Immediately, we met as a team. Some new members of your team came on, of course, Dr. Morris. And that was a pretty seamless transition. He had done projects like this before, so it certainly wasn't his first rodeo with doing energy projects that were, that made sense. And then Brian Cherry took the place of your predecessor from the facilities department. And Brian's been fantastic to work with and anything we need, he's right on it. In fact, we were talking earlier today on just crunching some data for the past projects. So Brian's very diligent for you guys and watching after things. Again, immediately, what is the plan of action? And so the big thing about the first phase was that you got such an aggressive incentive as you see on that advertisement. So we wanted to make sure we captured, the incentives are out there because these make these projects happen. So any money we can go after for you guys, we did and we went out immediately, which is kind of why this is a bit pressing because this money, it doesn't sit there forever. If it doesn't get used, the government takes it back and then they don't reallocate for a while. So it's certainly necessary to jump right on the funds when they're available, which we've done here. We're pretty much ready to go for this project and we would have to be starting very, very soon, which is why they asked us to speak tonight because the project actually has to be done by the end of April. But we'll get into that in future slides. The timeline was this, essentially. Start right away in September, starting to do the facility analysis. Basically, simultaneously, AEC, who was a big part of Phase One, the local engineering firm, that was a big part of discovering a lot of the downfalls of the way the high school was run prior and then it translated into that project we had done. AEC was on board with another phase and they did the same thing for the other three schools. Meanwhile, we were doing our own assessment of the HVAC and control side of things alongside of them because that's where our specialty is, obviously, the HVAC side of it. We've done it for you guys for several years and we started paring through the other three schools. The idea was to come to you guys with a solution in December that we could move forward with and then start the implementation of the project January. And of course, like I alluded to earlier, have it completed by the end of April because that's what the incentive is geared towards. Otherwise, you don't get the money and we don't have a project. So that's pretty important. So the rest is history, essentially. The facility improvement measures that we came up with as part of the project, I'm sure many people can look at this from an engineering standpoint and say, "Why didn't you try this? Why didn't you try that? Why didn't you try this?" There's several things that we would like to have done mechanically speaking, except for the fact that we have limited time to get them done as it had to be done and implemented by the end of April, then stop measuring and verifying your savings. Although, we are very happy and you should be happy with the items that we have up there because these are probably the strongest ones anyway. The ones that we wouldn't have been able to capture wouldn't have been your stronger payback items regardless. So we feel pretty confident in this project and that we've got the right FIMs or facility improvement measures. Anybody wants more detail on this? We could talk about this for hours upon hours upon hours, whether or without cough medicine. Yeah. So I know not everybody does and you've got a big agenda. So I'll go through these and offline, anybody wants email or call, we can go through anything.
Tom, you might want to mention the Mastway boilers because that was an interesting...
Yep. Actually, I've got some pictures of that in here, too. So take your advice on that one. Airflow retrofit, retrocommissioning, that's what we did at the high school. In 2011, all the other three schools went through a renovation process, as you're well aware. And in that process, you had controls installed, energy management system controls like you have here. They're not quite as sophisticated as the one you have at the high school. The ones you have here are Siemens controls. You have pretty much every bell and whistle, no man on that. These schools are a little bit limited in what you can do, but we found a lot of improvements. Before, we said that we could integrate the system into one. One, a couple of big things happened. In the first phase, we set up the latest and greatest software that we have at the high school. We also installed a much more robust and bigger server that we put in an actual server room. Before, your server that ran your energy management system was just in a custodial closet. So it wasn't the best environment for something that ran not only all of your temperature controls, but your energy and the air quality in the building. So you should be happy in the last phase that we were able to capture a really nice server that's in a rack mudded room. It's temperature controlled and it should last you a long time. That enabled us to grow the system into a future phase and eventually get all your buildings onto one system, which would make Brian's life a lot easier. Kyle, I don't know if you want to talk quickly about anything that you found with those controls or not, but...
Let's elaborate what you said. We're more limited to what we can do, obviously, with our controls because it's someone else's system.
Do you want to come up to the mic?
Sorry. We're a little limited to what we can do, but we can still implement 90% of what we're doing at the high school. We can still do energy savings by early start stop times. We'd be adding VFDs to the existing pumps. We can just kind of play upon the schedules, you know, is the big part. And also, I think comfort, you see comfort improvement throughout because we've talked to the staff at those schools and they've kind of showed us areas that are having, you know, hot spots, cold spots, whatever. And as soon as we connected to that system, we could see configuration errors, things that we could fix right off the bat that would fix, you know, maybe in C and just kind of get those off the plate. But we have a book, this is the commissioning report from the last phase, and this is kind of the same format we'd follow for this phase. Spells out each and everything. We check out, check out every sensor on the wall, temp sensors, make sure they're all calibrated within a certain range. And we spell out how we're running the systems now, after we've made changes, how they run from day to day and at nighttime, off occupied hours.
Perfect. The important thing is that Kyle's our integration specialist and it's very important for everyone to know that we spent a lot of time going through the buildings because everyone says that they can do integration. And this is one of those things that you could talk hours on, but... The important thing is that Kyle's our integration specialist, and it's very important for everyone to know that we spent a lot of time going through the buildings, because everyone says that they can do integration. And this is one of those things that you could talk hours on, but essentially, either you can integrate what's there, or you can't. And we didn't want to just go in and say, "Oh yeah, we can integrate with those controls, no problem," and then get down to the final connection, when your incentive is based upon the final connection, and find out that we can't. So Kyle and one of his other colleagues spent three weeks going through all those controls, making sure that we can make that connection, because it's very important that we can. As part of the integration of the Siemens system, demand control ventilation, essentially ventilate based on occupants, who's in the space, not just on a schedule and what an engineer prior had said. So if someone's in the gym playing basketball by themselves, they're going to ventilate based on one person, not 500. So the system otherwise wouldn't know if, how many people are in the gym, or the cafeteria, or the library, or the space. So we try to do that any place that we can, and we'll make that part of this project as well, of course. That saves electricity and fuel, because you don't have to temper that air. SSTO is start/stop time optimization. Again, what Kyle said, it's a form of very aggressive scheduling. Basically, it helps you utilize...
Finish them.
No, great question. I love it.
Mastway is an older building.
Right.
And so you've discussed integrating the controls.
Yep.
So the Mastway before you integrated, and the Mastway today, what are we controlling the environment in the building? Is it multiple locations? Is it one location? Is the gym in the gym? I'm just curious.
You have what they call a virtual server. You don't have a nice software server in an IT closet like you have here at the high school. You've got a virtual web browser. It's basically a browser that you can hit an IP address on the internet and control things from one location, which is held at the middle school. So it'll be different, because that'll go away, and will connect every school back to the Siemens server at the high school. So now it'll all come back to one system. So you can control literally Brian or anyone that has access to the system and has ability to control it, can go on one screen and see all their schools. So if somebody complains about a temperature issue, or scheduling, snow days, holiday breaks, you got President Obama coming into town, and you want to make a change, Brian can do that for one location.
With the high school, remember the settings, you'd start to heat the building too early, you don't heat too late. And my understanding is that the settings were set so that we saved a lot of energy.
Correct.
Did you find something similar here, that some of the settings were set in such a way that we were wasting energy?
Absolutely, yeah. If we didn't, we wouldn't have a project, unfortunately, you know? So unfortunately, things were out of whack, but fortunately, we can fix it there, before we can get you incentive money to do it, and we can, you know, save you money every year. So the end result is, yeah, for sure. The trick is maintaining it, which is why they sit there and say that's the way they do it, and that's the last slide, is that they have a third incentive that incentivizes the school department to maintain the measures that we install, so that you continue to do the things that we put in. Because we can't put all these in, and then you turn the place into a hotel, and run it 24 hours a day, you know? It doesn't make sense. They give you $150,000 to do these measures, and you don't do it, so. Again, scheduling. The SSTO, I will say on this one, Kyle spent a lot of time trying to figure out whether the controls that are at the other three schools can do SSTO, because that's a smart function of building automation. And essentially, the Cliff Notes of that is, it allows the building to learn how to run, without always having to make programming changes. It's pretty smart, pretty sophisticated. So if you say that the building should start ventilating and heating at 7:00, but the system over the course of the year learns that it really doesn't have to start ventilating and heating until 8:30 or 9:00, that's a lot of run hours. Multiply that hour and a half by several pieces of equipment for three schools, that's a lot of money. So we'll be implementing that, and it's Kyle's job with Brian to maintain that schedule over the course of the next several years, to continue doing scheduling like that. So it's a much more sophisticated way of just scheduling. The days of just going in there and clicking a 7A to 5P schedule are pretty much over. You know, we want to make sure that we're providing a healthy learning environment per occupant in the classroom or space, but also utilizing as least amount of energy possible doing it. So Mastway boiler, that's a unique boiler system. You know, in the 80s, they had that modular type approach. It's essentially one boiler, but they had several boilers, five or six in a row, that they wanted to modulate as heat was needed, essentially. Great idea in theory, except that when we checked it during our walkthroughs, it's running about 78% to 79% at best. We can do much better than that, of course. So we have proposed, at this time, because of the nature of the year that we want to do this, one boiler to carry the school 70% of the time, and run that boiler somewhere in the vicinity of, actually, if you got a picture of that, Sean, 93%, 94% efficiency versus 78%. It's actually in the PowerPoint. Yeah. Yeah, that's your existing boiler plant there now. So you can see how things are, there's five boilers right in a row there, that tie into one, essentially one header, which means it's one boiler. And the theory was to modulate it up and down based on your need. It's just not, the hydrotherm boiler is not an efficient boiler, and we can do a lot better. Again, we say 89% to 93%, because we don't always want to overpromise. We kind of want to give you, you know, be real conservative with our numbers and overshoot it. It makes us all look better. So I really think that Jim makes me put 89% to 93%, but I like 94% or 95%, and I think we can do that, so.
I just wanted to add, the boiler you have is designed to be the most efficient on the coldest day of the year. It's a fact. On the coldest day of the year, it runs the most efficient. The rest of the year, it has to turn on and off to meet load. And every time you're turning on, you're blowing hot air through it up the stack, and you're paying to have that heated. The newer boiler we've been putting in is using condensing technology. And what that does is the stack temperature, the heat that you're trying to heat up, doesn't go up the stack, it stays in the building, and all the heat that goes into that boiler, the majority of it, goes back into the building. So it ranges, in the shoulder months, we can get 95%, 96% efficiency when it's on the shoulder months. But on the coldest days of the year, where I'm getting a much higher temperature, I need that higher temperature to meet the load, I'm not as efficient. I could be in this 87% to 88%. That's why we show a range. So the boiler efficiency change is based on the time of year. We're just keeping more of the heat in the building and not going up the stack.
And most boiler plants in New England are designed that way, unfortunately. The truth is, you don't need 180 degree water 99% of the year. You need 130 degree, 140 degree water, the majority of the time, which is where the condensing technology comes into play.
It's the same technology you have at the middle school and the new boiler at the middle school.
And that's a picture of what the new, I said domestic hot water plant, but that's what the new boiler would look like. So the idea is, under this phase, is to provide a boiler that is about half of the entire capacity of the boiler plants that's there. It's about 750,000 BTUs, the entire plant is about 1.8 million. Run that 70% of the time, and that'll save you not only efficiency, but just use pure thermes. And then pull the domestic hot water off from that chain of boilers, which is the way it is now, and have its own separate boiler for domestic hot water, so you only heat what you need. So you're not continually heating that big tank in the corner of the room, regardless if you need it or not. Because the way things were engineered in years past was, students took a lot of showers, they used a lot of domestic hot water, and the fact is, they just don't anymore, so.
I remember when we toured Mastway, I think it was the beginning of the year, there was this piece of cardboard we saw on the stack. Are we going to get rid of that, or is that still there?
We would love to.
It was like some kind of like, you know, gold, and there was some sheet metal or some kind of venting that were using a piece of cardboard, and it was like insane.
That's for the combustion area.
Yeah.
It was separating the combustion, you have to allow air to come in to run the boiler. And it was so cold, that's why they had to put cardboard to try to flex it on it.
It's Yankee ingenuity.
Can I ask a question about Mastway?
Sure.
Last, I think it was last year, or the year before, last year, we installed the new temperature control system at Mastway, is that right? And that's going to be compatible with this new boiler?
Yep.
Really dumb question, but I don't know anything about boilers.
No, that's part of the integration piece.
Okay.
Because that was the big thing. You guys spent a lot of money on controls in 2011 for all three schools. But they were not, they were never commissioned to run the way they should run, like the high school does now. So that was a big part of this, is to get it all in the one system, so that we can run it more efficiently, and Brian can have control of all the buildings from one location. So that was the trick.
Okay.
John, did you have a question?
Maybe, possibly. What do you mean by shoulder months?
So like Jim said, the real cold, the real cold days are...
Like today.
The rare, yeah, like today. Springs, fall, you know, going in and out of seasons.
Buildings are designed for two days of the year. Design engineers up until about 2002, we're designing them for the coldest day of the winter, and the hottest day of the summer. The rest of the days in between, they left to the building operations to figure out. And what we're doing is, the system is allowing it to change, and everything is being slowed down, or temperatures are changing, to meet the load, and not just be ready for the coldest day of the winter and the hottest day of the summer.
Careful what you ask. I told you, we could talk for hours on this. So that's the boiler. Again, if people want to talk more about this, we certainly can.
What is the lifespan of the server?
The server that's there? 15, 10, 10, 15 years? Cool troll, it's essentially a frequency drive for the walk-in coolers and freezers. Things like, and careful what you ask, because Jim loves these things, and he could talk for hours on these things as well. But, you know, when you have deliveries done, that the freezers don't continually run while the door's wide open while you're having a delivery, it can shut down. Or the door only heats to clear the window, or keep the door warm when it needs to. It cycles things on and off, versus just continually running all the time. That's the Cliff Notes of it. Now, if you want to split atoms on it, Jim can certainly go into the delineation of molecules and things that happen when you open the doors, but probably we'll do that at a later date. VFDs, again, it's a way to ramp up and slow down the pumps. You've got some of those here, on some of the equipment that we installed on the roof. Same thing with the motors, to ramp them up and slow them down based on use, and not just continually running them full speed when you don't need all that horsepower. Lighting, you want to go through? There's some pictures on there. So this is some lighting of the past, this should look pretty familiar to most people. Oops.
That's the old one.
Yep.
That's the fitness center at the middle school.
Which one do you want?
That's fine. So these are the old lights right here at the, like Jim said, at the middle school. Those are the 400 metal high light, 400 watt metal high light lamps that are hanging down, and probably the most inefficient lamp that you can have in a large space like that, if you go to the new high school gym light next to it. That's what we would want to look like. That's what you have now at the high school. That was part of the project we just did. That's the High Bay T5 lights, that use probably half the wattage, and that, and cost savings as well. So you get better light, twice the light, and half the cost to run it. It's pretty amazing.
The simplest part is, you can turn them on and off instantly. And when you turn the gym lights on, and they take 20 minutes to come up, so people don't shut them off. The new lights can turn on and off instantly. It allows people to shut things on and off.
Not only that, but we had occupancy sensors put on every lamp. So every lamp has its own occupancy sensor, versus just having one in the middle of the gym, or some people put one on each end. If, you know, you're on one side of the gym, you'll use just those troffers, and not just the half. So we're getting the best usage and the best savings we can out of every single lamp. And we would be doing this type of restructuring of the entire, every classroom, every lamp, every valves, in all three schools. This is a complete lighting retrofit, as well as LED lights on the outside of the buildings, like you did here. So you pull in now, you kind of see those xenon-looking type lights you have here? Those were installed in Phase One. Those would also be installed on all the other three schools. Yeah, you can click on that one, too. This was a much better light than what you had there before. The lights that were there were, you just lost 70% of the light up through the ceiling, atmospheric lights. And we've, we heard a lot of compliments after that, the light was so much better. Sure, people have heard it. So that kind of gives you an idea of what things would look like after the fact. So then, go to the next one, if you want.
I think we're going over the boilers.
Yeah, so essentially, the boiler plant would be one heck of an improvement, for sure. The only last step would be, for that boiler plant, would be to add another boiler, just like the one we installed this time. So you'd have, you know, almost full redundancy of the boiler plant, and both of them would be running at 94% to 90% efficiency, all the time, not just 70% of the time. So that would be the end game, another phase, if you will, or budget more money in the future. And that is essentially the measures that we look into. And then the meat and potatoes of the whole thing, which is, if I had a drumroll, I would do it. Your investment atop is, it's a $674,000 project. The annual savings are $74,000. That's kilowatt-hours and thermes saved. And all this is basically based upon our calculations that we did, Jim and Kerry did over the past several weeks, and then checked them two and three times, because this is what we present to TRC, which reviews them, which is a third-party firm. AEC reviews them, which is another third-party firm. We've sent all of our calculations, and then I can actually click on this. We don't always show every single thing that we do, but this is a spreadsheet that Kerry put together with Jim, and it's a very nice tool, because it shows, at the bottom, you can see every school, and I'll go through it a little bit, but it has every formula that we used for the calculations and savings. Our goal was, for the higher incentive, which is what we've got here in paper, was to become, to get to 15% overall reduction in energy. As you can see there on the savings portion, 31%. That's pretty awesome. That means we get there. And that was the tough part, was trying to make sure that we can get to that amount of savings, or else the incentives, it's a moot point, it's not there. So TRC wants to see at least 15% overall savings, and it can't be more than 50% of that is just lighting. So we have to come up with other measures. You've got to be creative for them to give you a hundred-something thousand dollars. You can't just say, "We're going to do a lighting project," and receive, you know, that kind of money. So they want to see creativity, which we did. I think they liked it, because they used you as a case study in the last one. So if you want to just show them how to, we, this is how, spent a lot of time on this. This is where the nuts and the bolts come to it. When third-party engineers want to see, it's easy to say you're going to save 31%, right? But it's 30% of what. And like Jim always says, if he didn't benchmark it and measure it, it never happened. So five years from now, Brian could come to you and say, "During my tenure there, I saved you guys 45% energy." But if he can't tell you 45% of what, then you don't know. So it's our job, you know, with Brian, to establish that. So we use these calculations, which we shared. It's our algorithms and everything, as you can see in the bottom, that we have to share to show people how we measured this. And third-party engineers are going to be wanting to look at this, to make sure that Kerry knows what she's doing, which we all know she does, and that her mentor, Jim, knows exactly what he's doing as well. Because Sean and I have no clue. And it's for every single measure. So it's just important for us to show you, so you show you all that, from lighting, that's all there. Every single lamp in the entire district. So a lot of time, obviously, went into this. I mean, this is every single, you can see Music Room 1, 2, 3, Office, Storage, Cafe, every lamp is measured and accounted for. So that if anybody asks any question about anything, we can provide them any data they want, and we feel pretty comfortable with it. If you don't have this, and they ask you for one little thing, and you don't have it, it may kind of speculate that you don't have all your ducks in a row for the whole project. So it's important to do your homework. We pride ourselves on doing our homework and doing it well. Again, this is the same thing on a VFD. If you look at all the calculations in the bottom, how we measure it, based on what is to the left. It's why there's never questions at the end, which is why we were able to get the money during the first phase, is that, here's what we want to do, folks, here's how we measured it, here are our calculations, let us know if you have any questions. And we never received a phone call last time. You get your checks, and the project went well. So we hope that that's going to happen the second time around.
Can you bring it back to the savings slide, so we can?
That's the one you want to see, yep.
So for the board, $674, $468, and then you subtract the incentives from that.
The 31 and the 114?
So it's $674, $468, minus incentives of 145,681, leaves a project of $528,787. And we go back to the previous conversation, that's why we were kind of fueling that pump relating to the $98,271 that's saying they're unused, leaving, you know, basically $440,000 to be considered, recognizing that savings that Tom's outlined are paid for through the budget we proposed through savings and utility costs. So the net during this 7.3-year payback is a wash.
So my question is, where do we come up with the 400? Since I'm a complete budget newbie, where do we come up with the 400,000? Because this has to be done by April, and the other money doesn't come till March, right? So...
Sue, did you do the investigating on that? Would you like to come up to the podium?
I mean, bake sales, or what are we doing?
No bake sales.
No bake sales.
I guess we're talking about a sale, then.
I actually contacted a leasing company, and they would lease us the money for seven years, $575,000. It was just a quick run-through of that, and that is a project that, we could put that out there for them, and they would give us that lease, and we would pay on it every year, basically with our savings. So that's how we'd pay for it.
So there's no upfront major chunk that we're coming up with?
What are we leasing?
Money.
The money to do the project would be like a...
It's like boring.
Yep.
Okay.
What was the interest rate that they...
2.07.
2.07.
That's really good. That's...
That's where the, that's where the money is right now, for municipalities and schools with good credit.
You have incentive number three is not available at this point. What does that mean?
Well, actually, we put that in the original ones, but then we added it, and Sean and I were going back and forth this today. That's why there's four asterisks next to it. That is similar to the first one. After a year, you have to measure and verify, like I said before, the savings, to make sure on an annual basis, especially after year one, to get that $39,000, that you sustained the implementation of the measures that you did initially. So they just want to make sure that, again, that you implemented the measures, you kept true to them, you kept the schedules and the savings that you thought you were going to have. And if you can show them that data, which we will be happy to help you with, Brian and I talked already today. Brian was asking me about last year's, and I was like, "We're only six months into it." But, so he's all over it. We'll be doing that again next year, in order to get to the $39,000. I think last year's was about $24,000 for incentive three, so...
So we would get the $31,600 in April? Is that when that one comes?
You get it, it's pretty, it's, it has to be reviewed by TRC. So it's like, yeah, it's like a month.
And then when does the $114,000 come?
That's after the project is done, and then they build, TRC will come and review the project.
And then the third one is after a full year?
Yeah. And the reason why we put "not applicable" in the beginning is because we were anticipating the incentive being extended. It was supposed to be cut off in June, but the Public Utility Commission extended it for another year, for the measurement and verification, which is a great thing for this project, because you have the ability to get that extra, that third incentive.
And how come it's not 1.7?
I know, that's why, that's why, the first time we met, I don't want to show this one, it's too good.
Sean?
How does the $74,418 savings break down by school?
Well, that's, that spreadsheet that I can show you, we, fortunately, that's a good question, because that's something I forgot to mention. Initially, P for P, or TRC, wanted things individualized per school, and that would be tough to get to 15% per school, because not all schools are the same, in terms of what they can be utilized for savings. So they allowed us, through many phone calls, many meetings, to combine them all together as one project, to get to the 15%. So we utilize economies of scale with everything, from cost to install the measures, calculations, everything, for one project. So we can, we can break it out if somebody wants that data. They may want it. It's in our spreadsheet that Carrie created. Every measure has its savings, so not just a school. But, good question.
I asked Sean to ask that question. I guess, I think this is important, though, we need to know, you know, 7.3-year payback is much different than what I know we saw in the last project. But how much of that project investment is allocated by school? And what is that savings per school? You know what I mean? I know there's an integration project.
Yeah.
But then, you know what I mean? I think we need to know that a little bit more.
We could, we could, we can get that to the administrative team, the three of them, whatever they...
Is it worth to do it? I mean, I think the integration is definitely worth it.
The problem is, is it alludes back to what I just said about 15% is that...
Yeah, I see.
The big incentive counts on at least 15% reduction. And we were never going to get there with just one school. You would get their other path, or they call it their alternative path, which is much less incentive. So the fact they let you put them three together, got you the big incentive dollars.
I know. Still would be helpful to have that information.
Oh, we could break it out every way, any way you want, from a cost standpoint. From an energy standpoint, the sheet that we've already given the third-party engineers has everything broken out, right down to the measure. The cost per school, we could get that to you, get that to Sue and/or Jim.
It's a cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah. If you want to see what's being allocated to each building, for sure. But again, you need all three together to get to that 15%.
I understand.
Yeah. So that was the trick. That was the one that took us the longest to try to get to.
Trying to break through the bureaucratic hurdles of the way that they were seeing things versus the way the project maximized.
But I think it would be helpful for us to have a sense of which school is the most, I mean, maybe it's pretty evenly distributed, I don't know.
Unlike...
But I think would be helpful.
Yeah, I think Massway, if you, Massway needs probably the most, because the boiler, it's the oldest, you know, some of the other ones have improvements that have been made, like the middle school, the boiler plant there is much better. So, I mean, if you were to look at it, I'd say that's probably the worst shape. Moreham being, you know, fairly new in the grand scheme of things. Improvement's there, but the majority of it is the other boiler room at the middle school, and probably Massway. But the lighting is pretty equal between the three.
So I think you answered my question, but the reason why you had to combine all three schools is because some schools are more efficient than others.
Correct. Yep.
So we'll get that information out to you between meetings, and have this as a consideration as an action item at the next meeting?
You mentioned that they extended the incentive another year, and that must only benefit projects that are currently in place.
Right.
It's not encouraging new projects.
Correct.
And so apparently, they're interested in projects that are finding savings to continue doing that, and so they've increased incentive for another year.
Correct.
What is the chance they'll continue to offer incentive beyond that this coming year?
I mean, there's always new incentives that come out, there's federal programs that come out with lumps of money. Jim's been part of that for many, many, many years. Every year it changes. It's, the trick is getting it while it's there, you know, while it's taught, essentially. And we're all over that, because that helps us track projects. You know, a lot of times, if we don't have that incentive, I mean, in New Hampshire, it's great, in Maine, it's terrible. They have half the incentive opportunities that you guys have here in New Hampshire. So be happy about that, there's a lot more opportunity for you guys. To get incentive dollars like this in Maine is really unheard of. So hopefully they keep coming, because it drives projects, makes us busy.
Are you available at the next board meeting, as the board is considering taking action on this one, on this item?
Sure.
So we'll have more discussion, a lot of time to process between the meetings, and...
Yep.
May come up with new questions that neither Sue or I could answer.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question, I guess, from Sue? What's the process of leasing money?
It's kind of the same idea as the technology presentation we had, doing the same kind of thing. We have a project, we're putting in some equipment, and we're essentially leasing the equipment and paying it off, but really we're doing it all at once. So we're borrowing the money to do the project, but it's another way of...
But does that need to go on or Antarctica, or...
It's already rest with this body.
Right.
Ooh.
She was...
And we have talked with our attorneys about that.
Okay, thank you.
So our next presentation tonight is Ann, in the ABC Committee. You know, are you doing it alone, or do you have a crew with you?
I have a crew.
Okay.
And I think I'm in the same shape as everybody else in this room.
Oh, God.
One of my questions.
Did I do anything good?
I'm only reading your...
We got it here.
Okay, let's see, slideshow. I can go through it this way. Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Morris, and School Board members, for the opportunity to speak again before the School Board about the budget and the process. I am honored to serve as the ABC Chair, and be given the opportunity to present our recommendations about improving the budget process. Some of the committee members are here, and I will point them out to you, in case you do not recall who they are. I am the Chair, and Tom Merrick is our Vice Chair, he's in the back row. Rob McEwen is our Data Analyzer, and regrettably, he is playing nursemaid to his family tonight, so could not be here. David Taylor is here in the back, he's our Secretary. Lisa Allison, you have heard from earlier, she has been here on other occasions. Nat Bolch is in the back of the room, if you haven't met him before. Wayne Burton is here in the second row. Marjorie Smith, on the other end, and Steve Woodruff, who is not here this evening. And I wish to point out where exactly are the report is available on the website, because it does exist there, under, on the right-hand side of the homepage of our district website, there is something called Budget/ABC Updates. And our report is there within its entirety, along with last year's final approved budget, although our proposed budget, the proposed budget is not there at this time. And the Budget Process Calendar for this year is also there. Also, on the website are all the ABC meeting minutes, that is under the School Board item, with, under subcommittees, under ABC. The table of contents for our complete final report includes the executive summary, which I had, was able to review with you a few weeks ago. That, and, under, under the executive summary comes the observations and specific recommendations, basically addressing the eight major recommendations or points made in the executive summary. Then, we had a section on revenue sources that was there, and the Budget Process Recommendations was, Section 4 was not included in that initial report. However, the conclusion was, and the appendices was not also in that one, but they are all there in that final report at this time. So you will now have a few minutes, I'd like to take to review Section 4 with you, which is the section on the Budget Process Recommendations. But first of all, let me mention that there were the eight overarching concerns, but yet two of them dealt specifically with the process, because as you have heard from us many times, that there is a need for long-term goals that will drive the budget. And it's been very difficult over the years to make budget decisions without having those long-term goals outlined in a strategic plan. And we're very happy to know that this is underway at this time. The other major concern that dealt with process had to do with the need for a long-term, multi-year capital improvement plan that will address the $4 million that we have heard of, that may be necessary for projected improvements. It may not be that total amount, since already $420,000 is in this budget. A goal, a primary goal of the ABC has been really to provide feedback to help strengthen the budget process. I think that's one of our major contributions over the last two years, so that that budget process can better serve the needs of the School Board, as well as our students and the community. And so hopefully, our budget process recommendations will affect future budgets. It may not affect this year's at this time, but these other recommendations we're making should have an impact on future budgets. It will be necessary, the, excuse me, we anticipate that in the next few months, we'll have more time to discuss these specific recommendations. There may be questions that come up tonight that we can address at some other time. But the, we really feel the budget process should really begin in the spring with an evaluation of the process to highlight areas in need of improvement. The School Board should provide a year-end summary and set overall goals in the spring, and targets for next year's budget. The ABC needs to be included in discussions with the administration about the budget during the spring and summer, and not just in the fall. We encourage there to be another joint meeting between the School Board, the ABC, and the Superintendent in the spring to discuss the budget process recommendations that you will hear. Overall, so the continuation of these joint meetings should go forward. Overall, the process of sharing information that affects the budgets needs to be coordinated and streamlined between the administration, School Board, and ABC. That's what we've been saying over the years, and we feel that the process we used this year was very helpful. Now, this is an item, this particular recommendation that is listed as number five in the list of recommendations, is something that we feel quite strongly about, because it is something that we have been talking about, within the ABC anyway, is about a need for a comprehensive and clear report of all accounting changes that happen from year to year. That needs to be part of our original budget presentation, in order to help budget discussions stay focused on substantive changes, while at the same time serving as a record of comparing budgets between years. We've had a struggle about that, knowing how things have really changed. Such a report should be easy to understand, list both to and from accounts, and should include dollar amounts for each account, with approximate amounts for the retired accounts as well. Changes which are due to external factors, such as energy costs, or prior year collective bargaining agreements should be included. This year, a significant step toward this end was taken by providing a rough list of major affected accounts shortly after the initial presentation of the budget. However, we recommend a comprehensive and clear report of all accounting changes become part of the initial presentation of the proposed budget. Item number six is, has to do with the total funding of the district really includes more than just Fund 10, but includes 21, 22, and 23, that really, with over a million dollars in the funds, 21, 22, and 23, that we were not ever given a clear opportunity to review. Such a review should become an important part of the process, soon as enrollments come clear, usually by the end of October, I think, the beginning of November. And then, jumping to number eight, and our recommendations fit on this particular slide, which is why I put it here, but it has been important overall for us to improve communication about the budget during the course of the budget process. And this has improved through, by the meetings the Superintendent has had with the public, and by our, having our joint meetings when we're discussing things. However, we feel that the website is still lacking in terms of its ability to make it user-friendly, and make it easier to find the materials, which is why it showed upfront where that information is stored. Item number seven had to do with the long-term budget expenditures, such as capital improvements, and anything related to new academic programs that will have a significant budget impact should be presented to and discussed with ABC and School Board early, or as soon as things are known that are going to be coming up during the budget process. The School Board was charged during the springtime and over the summer with analyzing capital improvements that were identified in last year's facility studies. So we were lucky to have Nat Bolch as a member of the ABC, and he worked closely with Brian Cherry, Director of Facilities, and Sue Caswell, to identify the high priority items which were, we were unable to place in this year's recommended budget. And the ABC will continue to work closely with Brian during the capital improvement planning process. Also, the second item that impacted the budget this year, which we found... Also, the second item that impacted the budget this year, which we found out in, within the budget process, was the Common Core State Standards. And we felt that if we'd known earlier what that budget impact would have been, that it was coming up, that it was going to affect technology so heavily, we might have been better prepared for that when it hit the, when we hit the charts. There is a glossary included at the end of our report this year, and we'd like to see them posted separately on the website, so that they're easy to find, because there's often language that we refer to here, abbreviations that the public may not be familiar with. It took us a while to learn what they were. Recommendation 10 had to do, has to do with non-school event expenses and revenues that are not clearly identified or listed separately in areas of the budget, and we'd like to see that happen. And then quarterly reports, which were given throughout the year, should continue, but they should really focus quite heavily on where expenses are above and below the budget. Item number 13 of our recommendations refers to the fact that the, there are several advisory committees, specifically maybe this year it was the Sustainability Committee, and other committees that are specified, and that, that are, let's see, recommends Advisory Committees Plan to Recommend Expenditure of Funds Inform the ABC During the Budget Process. We recommend that all expenses and revenues related to these advisory committees should be able to be tracked easily in the budget. And then, we also recommend that there, how, review how the revenue accounts are specified and accounted for. There are revenue accounts, for example, for preschool, summer camp, et cetera, and they aren't really clear as how they're accounted for in the budget. Finally, our last recommendation was item number 15, and every, and this relates to, every effort should really be made to prepare a budget with a reasonable contingency to address unforeseen cost increases, and that reduces the likelihood of large year-end excesses, such as we had had in years past. And we are, we acknowledge the fact that the voters will have a chance to vote on a Warren article to place any surplus funds into a fund, rather than having them be used to reduce the tax impact. What the process generated this year is, is better cooperation between the ABC, school board, and superintendent, with several opportunities provided for the public to, for discourse, with the public, for discourse with the superintendent about this budget. And the budget calendar is always tight, being crammed within three months, so we encourage the district administration to broaden the discussions and begin them as soon as possible in the year. And in the past, we've made several recommendations for raising revenues. Some of them have been addressed this year. And we just, would like to encourage the school board to look at some of our past recommendations for ways to increase revenue. I'm not going to go through them. You can see them in other reports, but some of them I just put here on this particular slide. They may be worth considering. They may be too small, too small to really worry about, but some of them are major, that we do encourage the school board to look at. Now, in conclusion, let me just remind you that our goal has really been to provide feedback, to help strengthen the budget process next year, to best serve the needs of our students and our community. And as we look forward to the conclusion of this budget year, and the first signs of future planning, we will continue to build and maintain a strong relationship with the board and the administration, so the ABC can be utilized to its fullest potential. We continue to anticipate advising the school board throughout this budget process leading up to the vote in March, and already are preparing a list of budgetary items we plan to research and explore in the coming year. Do you have any questions?
Yes, Jim.
Yeah, and I don't have a question, but I do think it's important, in terms of public comment, to thank the committee from my perspective as superintendent. I think the board works diligently on the budget, and to have another set of eyes and ears working with us has been very helpful to me as a new superintendent in the, in the district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Where is the, are the, you just mentioned other resources for funding, resources?
Oh, the, the list of revenue recommendations in our last year's report?
Yes.
Would be a good place to go back.
So they're not in this report?
It's not in this report. It is something that we always encourage the school board to look at, and the superintendent to look at what other areas of, and I think the incentive package was one that the superintendent picked up on this year, the tuition-paying students we've been talking about for a couple of years. All-day kindergarten is something that we discussed last year within the ABC and is being discussed again. Cost-sharing with other towns had to do with snow plowing and things like that. Special after-school program busing fees is something we've talked about, you know, charting, if, you know, this may be a small item, but it may amount to a ways to reduce the transportation budget, facility use charges, and the selling of unused district-owned property was something that was mentioned last year in the ABC, that there is a piece of land that was, at one time, talked about for school, to build a new school on, that is there. I'm not referring in this case that we had not talked about middle school in that, but in that case.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you're, your voice is not.
I asked John some of my questions, but this one might be more difficult to whisper to him. The one, the one thing I'm interested in understanding more about, I know it was on a Warren article, is the treatment of the surplus money. My understanding is we as a board can vote to spend money that's been approved. And so I'm trying to understand why, what, what's the point of this, really? To create a fund? Because if we, if there is an emergency, and Sue comes for us and says, you know, we really, you know, we can cover this, we think it's, it's important, that's what we've done in the past. And I'm, I'm trying to understand also the two and a half percent that is on the Warren article, why that percentage? It's a percentage of what, I mean, it's arbitrary, because we don't know of what dollar amount is being applied to. So I've been thinking about this, and I'm just trying to understand what, why? I mean, why change? Just because the state allows it now? But is there, is it giving us, is it taking away some of our options in some ways, if we want to give back that money to the taxpayers?
I'll make a stab at it. Sue, you may be able to help me with this.
I'm probably missing something very fundamentally.
No, I think it's an important question, because I think that the ABC specifically recommended last year that the school board, you know, there was a sizable surplus, and the school board was able to make decisions to spend from that.
Right.
Surplus, and not return it to the taxpayers, which, that option is still there. That doesn't change it.
Okay.
We were just, I think our recommendation said that, that the school board not overdo it. And so this provides us an option, I mean, it doesn't restrict the school board from still spending from the surplus it might have before the end of the year, but it says, even after that, if you've overbudgeted, that there is a place that you can put the money that you can use in future years without.
I still don't understand why we want to do that. I still don't know why.
It's up to the voters.
Let me take a shot at it.
Go ahead, please.
Right now, this is a situation that's happening in Maine. The governor is curtailing state funding for education by $14 million. So a district this size, we would lose a quarter of a million dollars. So the governor's made that decision, the legislature has to take action, and the legislature might take action in March or April. Way too late for a school district to be able to respond to that loss of revenue, other than to going out to the voters and saying, can you raise $250,000? Or would you allow us to raise an additional $250,000? If you have a account that the state is now, and New Hampshire is for the first time is going to allow school districts to have, then should a contingency that's beyond our capacity to handle occur, then you go to the voters and ask for release of those funds. So it's, it's basically an emergency fund of, to use when you have unpredictable costs that occur beyond what you could absorb inside an operating budget. So beyond the two and a half percent, it has to go back to the voters, anyway. You know, you only can spend what the voters have authorized you to spend.
Jim, why two and a half percent? Two and a half percent of what? You know what I mean?
Well, in Maine, it's 3%. It's an arbitrary number chosen by the legislature to say, this is the ceiling to which you can accumulate funds to put in that account.
So it could be two and a half percent of $100,000?
Oh, no, it's two and a half percent of your.
Bottom line, right?
Oh, I thought of the monies that were surplus.
No, no, no. Say it, say it again.
Oh, of the appropriated budget, it's determined by the Department of Revenue. So I've already contacted them to say what is this number? Close to a million dollars for our budget.
What did they give you as a number?
They haven't given me the number yet, but they will calculate that number for us. Well, two and a half percent of our budget.
So it may be of what our bottom line is of our budget, two and a half percent of that?
We don't know that, Megan, because they have to calculate it, and they'll, they'll feed it back to us. If we, if we did what you're just saying, you're absolutely right, it would be close to a million dollars, but we don't know if that's the number that, excuse me, the revenue service is going to give us as our maximum. So as soon as we know that, we'll be certainly informing the board and the.
Well, is that going to happen before we have our Warren article?
Yes.
Yes. We've been, actually, Sue and I have been asking since Thanksgiving, as, as well as all other school systems.
So who's going to give us this number? IRS?
Jim?
Thanks, Jim.
Is this similar to, in our budget, we used to have a line item that we would take money and reserve it for special ed, in the amount of, we'd put aside, and it was up to a certain, was it up to $400,000, and we hit $200,000?
If we had, excuse me, like everybody else in the room, I do have a cold.
I know.
If we had an overwhelming in-migration of very expensive students, it absolutely could, you know.
Well, my, my point was that we used to have, and we curtailed it, because we hit a max of a certain amount of money in our budget. We used to take, was it $50,000 a year we would take and we put into this fund? And then we hit the $400,000 mark, or whatever arbitrary number was determined, and I guess the question would be, is, where did that $400,000 arbitrary number also come from?
Well, it's.
Because today, that doesn't cover.
That one was self-determined.
That doesn't cover a whole lot.
Right. This board, at some point, your predecessor's made a determination that was the number.
So my, my question then is, if this is something we're considering, then where is that fund? And do we need to consider also replenishing it?
Good question, and we can ask Catherine for an update in our next, between now and our next meeting.
Which fund?
The special needs. Is he running for special needs?
Yeah, we, we even used it. I asked that question last time, and we haven't used any of it, so the money's still there.
But it, may I just ask, is that, is that number enough?
$400,000 is.
I mean, if you got two or three.
She says yes.
We say yes based on our past, our past experience with youngsters moving into the district with unanticipated costs. But could it happen that it would exceed that? Sure.
In the most extreme case, no, but in the typical kind of cases, yes.
I have a couple of questions. So is this two and a half percent cap? I'm sorry, we totally derailed here.
That actually fits one of our recommendations, so you're ready to go.
Okay, fine, so good. Two and a half percent cap, is that per year or total? Like if we have, say, we, so we have a $4 million budget?
Forever, ever.
Because it's easier to calculate numbers based on even numbers. Four million dollar budget, and we have 2%, we don't, but let's pretend, we have a 2% surplus, two and a half percent surplus this year, and then next year, we have a $4 million budget, and we have a 2 and a half percent surplus. Do we get to keep both years 2 and a half percent? No, it's a total of two and a half percent.
It's not cumulative, it's, once you're there, you're there.
So then my second question is, how does it, how do we prevent this, if we, if this passes, how do we prevent this from serving as an incentive to overbudget?
Well, I think, I think the words, as you're using them this evening, surplus and overbudgeting, are really not, I would say, state-of-the-art terminology. What you have when you're building.
Probably not.
I'm just, in the same terms that everybody can understand.
That's not, that's not meant in any condescending way at all. When you're building a budget, you're building a budget on estimates.
Right.
So you estimate your fuel cost is X, and it comes in way beyond X, so you have an over expenditure. And you estimate that your specialized costs come in at Y, and they come in at Z, and they're less. So you're building a budget, basically, you know, six to eight months before you're ever even going to start using it. And so the way that you monitor your budget, especially with Sue as your business manager, is that you're monitoring it on a monthly basis, you're monitoring it on a quarterly basis. You have to have some surplus at the end of the year. You have to have a balance at the end of the year, otherwise, you're going to be crucified by the community for over-expending your budget. The question is, what is that space where it's reasonable? You know, the community clearly said, $2.5 million is unreasonable. But if you run a budget that says, say you end up at $100, you're equally unreasonable, because what you'll do at that point is put Sue and me in the hospital, because we'll be fretting over the budget every single day, every single week. So you're trying to craft a budget that's reasonable, that's responsible, and is accountable. So at the end of the year, so Sue right now is saying, I estimate there may be as much as $300,000 left unexpended at the end of the year. That's in the scheme of a $38 million budget. So you're not cutting it razor-thin, but you're at a place where I think the community will react and say, $38 million, $300,000? That's a pretty reasonable place to be. So I think when we talk about surpluses, what we're really talking about is unexpendable balances, and that also could be because we, I mean, we didn't anticipate revenue accurately. So the state says you're going to get, you know, $2 million, and they, for whatever reason, send us 2.2. So we're, you know, up $200,000 on revenue. It's always watching the revenue and the expenditures, and having a superintendent and a businessman, you could say, I don't think now's the time to make an expenditure. You know, the revenue, the cash coming in, and their expenditures going out are too close, so we put the brakes on expenditures. So it's really about carefully monitoring an approved budget, hoping that you end up with a balance, not one that's so extreme that people get angry, but one that's rational in terms of making a guesstimate for FY14, as an example. So at the end of this year, the auditors will come in, they'll go through all the major lines of the budget, and they're going to say, you know, you had a surplus in personnel, but you had a deficit in transportation. You had a surplus in supplies, but you had a deficit in fuel. And so at the end of that year, you end up with that $300,000. That's okay, because, you know, it's still the taxpayers' money, and you're still using it appropriately. So the reason that 2 and a half percent becomes so critical is because you can't anticipate every need every year dead-on, and by your having the authority of the voters to be able to have that balance, it will give you the ability to react to times where unanticipated things happen, where you don't have to say to the voters, gee, we have to raise some more money. You already have it raised, it's there. And it's a pretty common practice on municipal government side to be able to do that. And this is the first time in New Hampshire's history, or recent history, anyway. You are given that authority by the legislature, but ultimately, the approval has to come from the local taxpayer. So obviously, you know, when we're talking about this, I have to do a much better job and not sound like a crackly old lamb when I'm talking. That's probably, tonight, I'll, I'll practice my presentation on why that's important to us when we get into next week and the week after.
So you mean reasonable is the state-of-the-art accounting vocabulary?
Absolutely, reasonable. And I'm sorry, Christopher, I came across.
May I call someone? I just need to share a story with Jim. I worked with a superintendent in Western Massachusetts who, who taught me some important lessons about what you allocate funds to, and once you allocate funds to something, then it's deemed taken care of. So my fear is that we have this money, and we then overcount on this money being there, and we, we don't budget as we should responsibly for facilities. I worked with him on a, on a foundation for, it was an endowment, and we had people coming in asking us for money, and he said, no, if we give you money, then the budget, the budgeting process will deem you unnecessary to be included. So I'm, my concern is that we, if we accumulate. So my concern is that if we accumulate this mass amount of money, even whatever the 2.5 percent amount is, that we then overlook our responsibility to keep it in our budget.
Yeah. I understand that concern, but I can guarantee you that's not the way that Sue or I would budget. We'll always be responsible to what our needs are.
He was always my favorite superintendent, but I think you are now.
Ah. I'm glad, because I probably got Christmas tonight.
If you'll permit me, Marjorie Smith, I just want to add two points. One that I think is important to keep in mind is something as simple as cash flow in terms of when, in fact, the school district gets the money. The system that exists now, the towns get the benefit of the float because the towns keep the money that comes in when taxes are paid, but they only send the money to the school district at certain points during the year, and the points are not necessarily the points that are most helpful to you when you have the biggest expenditures. But the other point that I want to make, and I think it relates to what you're referring to, if the money all had to be spent in a given year, you have the temptation of buying a lot of paper clips in the last few weeks. You know, if you don't spend all your money, you're not going to get that line in the budget next year, and so you're going to try to spend and convince Sue that this has to be purchased now, whether it's buying equipment or paper clips. The one advantage here is it reinforces the logic of saying, don't push to spend that money at the end of the year, but maintain it in order to be able to be available for the purposes that you were talking about. So I share your, I agree completely with you about if you have the money there, is it a temptation to spend it? You know, if you build it, will they come? In some ways, this will incur, one would hope it would encourage, that there's not that rush to spend some money because you happen to have it, that you know that you can save it for a day where you'll need it more.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Another ABC member.
Just for the, as somebody, Wayne Burton, I'm on the ABC. If some of you don't know, I'm also president of a college that runs a $50,000 budget for the last 15 years, and our auditors are very clear with us, leave some money that you can have some room to work with, because there's no way you can run a budget. For-profit organizations have a great advantage. They try to hit, maximize profits. We have to hit a point if you are really trying to do it. There's no way you can do that. Give yourself a break, you'll manage the resources much better if you know that there's a little wiggle room in there. The voters intended the money to go to the district anyway, so use it prudently, but give your administrators some room at the end of the year. If there is a surplus, which is bound to happen, we hope, anyway, and you'll manage your resources much better, is the way I look at it. Thank you.
I had a question last year, shortly after being elected. I had an email from the auditors saying, do you have any concerns about the audit? And I went, huh? And I guess what I'm asking is if that is something the ABC can also give some input and advice on. You mentioned, I know in another school district where the funds, the outside funds, like ski club money coming in and going out, and the preschool program, and those kind of, were not as closely looked at.
Monitored, monitored.
Monitored, as you mentioned before.
Right.
And if this is something that the auditor would be interested in having more this year?
I've not had, I don't think the ABCs had a direct communication with the auditors about anything like that. I don't know, Sue is usually the one that deals with the auditors. We haven't even met with them.
As I said, I had no concerns because I knew nothing.
Yeah.
So...
But it is something that former...
Which is a blissful state to be in.
It is something that former ABC members have brought up in meetings and have been pointed out as something they were aware of, but I have no knowledge of what the auditors might say about that.
Thank you.
That is absolutely right, and we do have the, we have the right to ask the auditors, for example, to do the high school checking account. There's zillions of dollars going in and out for various clubs and organizations, but we can do that in elementary school, and I used to do that periodically on a random basis. The other thing that we're doing now with our accountant is we're sending him out into the schools and auditing the checkbooks for receipts and so forth, and teaching our lead secretary or the secretary in the building who's keeping the accounts, how to manage those accounts so that we send an auditor to the school, we'll have proper accounting procedures at the building level as well. So we're very fortunate to have the accountant we have now on staff, and he's very capable.
Okay, thank you.
Before closing, can I just mention the appendices that are in the report? Because Appendix B is the budget visualizations, graphs, and supporting documentation that was prepared by Rob McEwen, and I think we intended to have him here tonight to do that presentation. But I will just point out that these budget visualizations in Appendix B are really good for those people that see things more visually. I mean, other than the spreadsheet, line by line and things like that, and there is a nice explanation, if you do look at the spreadsheet, what each part of the budget line accounts for. And on each separate page for each, there is a description at the top of each page in Appendix B associated with each of the graphs that are presented by Rob, that are, explain it very carefully. And he did ask me to just mention tonight that the salaries, the two salary sections in Appendix B really point out and make clear how much of an impact the salaries have on the budget, the salaries and the benefits. So look carefully at these, you will see how that is really what causes the budget to increase a great deal each year.
Go ahead.
And if you have questions that you would like specifically to ask Rob, either he can speak to you at another time, or please contact him by email, rmcuen@...
Oh, now you've done it.
Yeah, ABC. All right. And I will also mention, this is from last year's Tax Impact Estimator. Rob will be working on this, and this was a very handy tool for every individual in town, in all the three towns, to estimate what their tax impact will be when we finally reach that point of having a budget that is in the warrant to be voted on. So if you want to use those numbers in this tax estimator, it will be put on the website. But this is, shows you exactly how it can be used. You put in your own numbers when you know what your own property assessed valuation is, and then it does it for the town of Durham, Lee, or Ann Madbury. And this would be, for example, this is the working budget scenario. This was based on last year, so don't use these numbers for this year. Okay? So those will be available.
The graphs that Rob did in the report were outstanding, and...
Well, thank you. I think that they were, I agree with you, and I'm sorry that he couldn't answer any questions tonight that you might have on them, but look at them and revel in them, I guess.
I did already.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go. Now all I have to do is figure out how to get out of it. Close the book. Pull it out.
I pulled the book.
We can do that, do what happens.
Announcements and commendations from the district?
I should really pick up where I left off in terms of my report, then let everyone know that individuals wishing to file for school district openings must do so between Wednesday, January 23, up until 4 o'clock PM on Friday, February 1. We'll be looking for a moderator for a one-year term and two at-large district school board positions, three-year terms. And our annual school district meeting, session one, is February 5 at the high school at 7 o'clock. We have a candidate's night scheduled for February 20 at Oyster River High School, and we have a determinate location yet, but that would start at 7 o'clock. And then Election Day Annual Meeting, session two, is March 12. I should have completed that when I was talking earlier, Madam Chair, I apologize for that, but now I have.
Thank you. From the board.
First, I'll do the calendar, because we don't have any principals here. So on January 10 at ORMS is the Geography Bee from 8:30 to 10:00 AM. At Massway on January 10 is the PTO meeting from 9:30 to 11:00 AM in the North Commons. And on January 10 at the high school is the Poetry Out Loud in the auditorium at 6:00 PM. Massway is having a parents' night out at 6:30 PM on January 11. And at the middle school, PTO meeting at 7:00 on the 15th, and a band and chorus concert at the middle school on the 16th, 6:45 and 7:00 PM. 6:45 for the PTO meeting, 7:00 AM, that would be horrible for the band and chorus concert, 7:00 PM. And that's before our next meeting. And then I also wanted to read an announcement. As most of you know, my seat is up for reelection in March, and I will not be running for reelection of my seat. For the past three years, I have given this district a lot of my time, sitting on this board, trying to do what is best for the children of our district. It is now time for me to give my attention to my own children. I firmly believe that there are lots of passionate, caring people in our district that can well represent a lot of factions in our community, and I know I do not have to sit on this board for multiple terms because there are others that can step up and serve. I also firmly believe that there are seven seats on this board so that there can be wide representation of all in our community. I have a child with an IEP. I am a mother of three boys, no girls. I have two children at Massway and one in PEP. My household has two working parents. We are not particularly well-off. Many of these factions will now not have direct representation on this board. I have full confidence that the remaining members will represent me and my children well, but it is always nice for the board to have representation on the board so that all parties are included in discussions as they come available. I serve most of my time on this board with a full-time job, serving on two boards with three young children and the wife of a civil servant. If I have time to serve my community, so do you. Within the next few weeks, the deadline for the filing will approach. Please take time to consider whether you would be a good candidate to fill this seat. Even though it has not always been easy, I have enjoyed my time on the board. This is because I have enjoyed doing the work of the district, working on policies, being educated on how our district works, and provide a quality education for our students. I have learned more about our district in three years, being on the board, than I probably would have in the 24 years I will spend as a parent of a student in this district. It was well worth my time. I am proud of myself for stepping up to serve our district and all of your children. This won't necessarily be the last time you see me representing our district and my children. Now it is time for me to finish my term and serve my own children. Thank you in advance for your consideration on this important matter, and thank you for your confidence in me to serve all of your children.
Thank you.
I know it's a little late, the holidays are over, but every year, Foster's has an art and writing contest, and I just wanted to congratulate all of the students in Oyster River who were winners this year. There's a lot of Massway writers and some really good artistic work that was done, and it's always a pleasure to see it.
Oh, I had a commendation. I just wanted to commend our administration and teachers in all four schools. They've had to deal with an extraordinary tragedy circumstances within the last three weeks and have supported our students and their parents very visibly and with good communication. So I just wanted to commend everybody for doing such a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Discussion items, public hearing review. Filtly silence.
Yeah, I reported at a last meeting that we accomplished three budget forums, and again, earlier this evening, just to remind everyone, we have three more coming up in January. The difference is that we extended the invitation to the town councils and select people to host those meetings, and I hope that people find the time to attend. Y'all put a lot of work into preparing a budget for the voters' consideration, and I think the more people who can attend those meetings, the better informed they are at our deliberative session.
Thank you. School Board Committee Updates. Anybody?
It was Kristoff's vacation.
It was for her. Yeah. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes of 12:19, 12:12.
Moved.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Ann.
Somebody else is going to have to learn how to move.
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Discussion hearing on, could we have a show of hands? Six in the affirmative, one abstention. Megan Turnbull and John in the affirmative. Public comment.
Denise Day-Durham, listening to the discussion about the 2.5 percent and the Article V in terms of, well, that's the Article V, and then there's also the issue about the capital improvement fund being, whatever, taken away, I guess, or dissolved, I guess is the right word. And if I'm understanding correctly, if Article V doesn't pass, but the capital improvement fund was dissolved, all that money would have to get spent or go back to the voters, you know, within this, basically at the end of this year. I know that's really kind of a worrisome thing for me to think about because that would mean that we would have neither that 2.5 percent buffer or that capital improvement reserve fund, whatever, to tap into. And so I guess I would maybe ask that you might want to consider doing it in two steps in terms of this year, looking to see if the voters approve that 2.5 percent this year, and then maybe looking to next year to maybe dissolving that fund as just something else. And maybe that's something that can also be clarified at the budget hearing next week because my guess is if I have those kinds of questions, there are probably other voters that also have those questions about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Planning, agenda planning, setting, review. I have a question, since I'm technologically retarded. In this budget, in last budget, there are not many meetings. There have been discussions about telephones. I have the kind of pickup. What is, I guess I'd like at some point to have...
I'll report back on that.
A report on telephones.
Jim, I'd like to, I don't know if this is planned, but all this work that Carolyn's been leading in terms of the core standards to see where we're at, that whole inventory process, getting a readout, that would be good.
Okay.
Because I think it was uncertain about what kind of, you know, some of what we would need to, if we needed to get different, you know, software or materials, whatever, to support where we have a deficit, I think it would be helpful to know that.
Great.
Ann Knight referred to the district having property that's not buildings. It would be nice to know if that exists, what it is, how extensive is that inventory? Thank you.
Great. Great.
And we have the dates. And.
Should move to go into non-public session, accord with RSA 9183, Roman numeral 2C, for the purpose of selecting the distinguished service recipient.
We should have roll call.
We need a second, and I think we need a roll.
We need a second.
Second.
Then a roll call.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Ann, and on the roll call, vote.
Ann Lane, yea.
Krista Vetz, yea.
Al Holland, yea.
Tom Muirk, yea.
Maria Barth, yea.
Charlie, yea.
Megan Turnbull, yea.
Do I vote?
No.
You can say it, don't let him say it.
I don't get to go in. I got to do it on the superintendent.